I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:05 PM for September 16th, a special meeting for the Cohoes City School District Board of Education. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, I'll turn it over for a roll call, please.
Mrs. Giller? Here. Mr. Pascal? Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Dion? Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Annaly?
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's meeting. It's an important topic, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Spring to get us started.
Thank you, President Nolan. Again, I'd like to welcome our Board of Education members and all of our participants tonight at our meeting, and especially to Assembly Member McDonald. But before I introduce our Assembly Member, I'd like to call attention to the three pictures here on the screen. So you can see that the first picture on the left is from Mrs. Nelson's room in, at Harmony Hill, and the students are moving. So again, it's important that, that we incorporate movement into our school day, and Mrs. Nelson is doing just that. The middle picture is Mrs. Loughlin, so she's one of our virtual teachers for fifth grade, and you can see her connecting with her class virtually. And then we have Mr. Dollar's Room from the high school, and that's a graphic design class, and you can see the students sporting a matching mask, and, and all of our students are, are just doing such a great job wearing masks and transitioning to all the, the new procedures. So, so we're grateful to our students for doing that. So, so now I'd like to turn it, and again, if you have questions, please email them to boardofedcomment@cohoes.org. And John, I hope you're okay with your picture that's from your website. So, so I'd like to turn it over to you. If you could talk about, you know, the budget, how it's impacting our school districts, and, and what your advice is for us.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Dr. Spring, and thank you to the board and all those who are listening. It's, I won't say it's a pleasure to be here, but I'm, I'm glad to be here because it's, it's always nice to come and talk about the good times, but we're in the bad times right now, and it's important that I listen and, and, and we share information as much as possible. I'll try not to get too far down the road, but the reality is, it's no secret, we know that the state is struggling financially. The messaging that's coming out is getting a little bit confusing. To be honest with you, you'll see an article today in the Times Union where the governor, through his budget director, has issued a letter talking about the fact, it was kind of an odd letter, to be honest with you, because it basically gave the impression that school districts are overreacting, and that this 20% cut hasn't happened. And the truth of the matter is, the 20% cut hasn't happened yet. Districts, though, have a responsibility to look at the whole fiscal year, and not just the first month of September. And because of the uncertainty, districts are really trying to figure it out. And I represent 13 different districts. I am on the phone regularly with many districts, Jennifer and Stacy and I've had many calls. And everybody is trying to figure it out and doing what works well for their community. And to be very honest with you, what works in Troy might not work in Albany, and what works in Albany may not work in Waterbury, what works in Waterbury may not work in Cohoes. So I don't think anyone's right or wrong. I think everyone's looking at this with their eyes wide open and trying to be reasonable about the process. We unfortunately, at the state, have been waiting, and waiting, and waiting. First it was April, then it was May, then it was July, and now we're into September, with the full expectation that the federal government is going to recognize that New York State, right, wrong, or indifferent, was the lead state in regards to COVID-19, and that's the good, bad, and ugly. But obviously, the major part is the economic impact. And as those of you know, at one point, it was, well, it's only a blue state issue. It's California, and New York, and New Jersey, and a state issue, and a territory issue. You have the state of Florida today cancelling programs that the governor, who is extremely close to the president, is cancelling because they can't afford it when it comes to unemployment. So the bottom line is, if there's any good news here, is that everyone's struggling, but we really need the US Senate to respond. So the state, to get back to the state of New York, has been patiently waiting to see what, if anything, the government is going to do. The federal government's going to do. To the governor's credit, he's been doing these little loopholes, which are not a cut. If there was an actual cut, then the legislature would be obligated to reconvene within 10 days to respond to those cuts. So they haven't done a cut as of yet. As you know, for school districts, September is a very, very important month. There is a lot of money that the end of September. So the next two or three weeks are going to be very telling on if the cuts are actually going to happen. If they do, then the legislature will reconvene, and we have the ability to respond to the governor's proposal. Now, I was on multiple phone calls with multiple BOSI's related organizations today, and everyone's thoughts are all over the map. You know, people say, well, the legislature should take back control from the governor. Okay, that's fine. I can tell you, as the only health professional in the legislature, that a lot more people will be dead if you had to rely on the legislature in regards to a healthcare crisis. And that's a fact. I'm not going to bore with the details. We are frustrated, though, because CARES Act money, about $2 billion, has not been released yet, of which some of that would be going to help schools with the burgeoning costs of PPE and preparation. We're not happy with a lot of the nonprofits that indirectly help school districts. You know, St. Catherine's, for example, or Parsons, or Northern Rivers, as it's called now, they have historically helped particularly urban school districts in regards to the most challenging of all students. Substance abuse facilities, mental health facilities, they're all not getting their money. They're having their money withheld as well. So everyone has been treated fairly. The problem is, everyone's being treated the same, which is poorly. We are doing a variety of different things in regards to getting the governor's attention, to respond to certain things in regards to getting the economy back open, but that's not really germane to this conversation. I do want to stress one thing that has come up that impacts Cohoes to a degree. I know Jennifer brought this up, and I followed up with the governor's budget director on this, but, you know, one of the expenses that continues to grow in this city of Cohoes, it's, 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 it's multiple millions of dollars in Troy and Albany, but here in Cohoes, it's growing, is in regards to charter tuition. And as you know, you're paying a certain price per head of how many students go there. And my position has been that if we're going to be looking at any kind of impacts on public education, then there needs to be a shared sacrifice with everybody who's getting education funding. So that includes the charter schools, that includes the parochial private schools because they do get support money for attendance and certain types of programs. And some people say, well, that's not a lot of money. It adds up to 10, if not 50 to $100 million a year. So there needs to be a shared sacrifice every step of the way. And the other thing that we've been pushing very clearly is that, and we're, we're running into problems with this, I'll be very honest with you, but Cohoes, like the other four cities I represent, is part of a high-needs district. Yes, we get more than 50% of our aid, covers the state budget, the city's, school district's budget. But it's because of the complexity and, and a lot of the challenges that are needed in an urban district. That's just a fact of life. And the urban districts and the rural districts are both being looked at and saying, wait a minute, this 20% is much more devastating here than it might be in a suburban district, like Inneski or Shen. And I'm not trying to play one off the other, but at the end of the day, I represent five urban districts, so I'm going to be pushing the urban route. And I have a couple, and even, even good old Waterford, which is now a city, they're not too far behind Cohoes when it comes to challenges. So we're trying to say, wait a minute, if we go down this route of 20%, which we hope we don't, we want to make sure that we take into account the fact, and the message is being heard at the governor's office, because I talk to our Ways and Means Chair pretty much every day, that you really need to take a hard look at what percentage is going to be applied to the high-needs districts, and it can't be 20%. Now, I say that, and I mean it, and that's what we're fighting for, but I also have to caution individuals, because the high-needs districts, which are primarily city districts and rural districts, garner 75% of the state aid each year. So of the $21 billion or $28 billion that's out there, 75% of it goes to the high-needs district. So we need to really find a way for the federal government to recognize the economic impact COVID-19 has had on all the states throughout this country, New York State arguably being one of the largest. The conversation comes up, I've had many outreach with the labor unions and, and, and members here in the Cohoes Bargaining Unit as well about, well, we need to raise taxes. And, you know, I've been a proponent that, you know, the billionaire's tax, the multimillionaire's tax, the pied-à-terre tax, which deals with these extraordinarily high-expensive condominiums being sold in New York City to Russian diplomats, they can all afford to pay a little bit more. So I've been a strong proponent of that, but I have to caution people. Even if that was approved tomorrow, it's not retroactive. It's only forward-looking. And I think that breeds into the other part of the conversation. This is bad right now, but we really don't know where the future's going to go. I'd like to think that things are going to be rosy. I was just talking to the city controller in Cohoes a while ago about their budget process and what they're preparing for, and he's saying, well, what do you think's going to happen? I said, I have no idea. I wish I could tell you the economy's going to rebound, but if we have to shut down New York one more time, it's going to be devastating, and we need to be very mindful of that. And at the same token, other revenue raisers, I've been a, a strong proponent of mobile sports betting, which have probably been $300 million, $400 million a year. I've warmed up to the fact that legalization of recreational marijuana is going to happen. So if it's going to happen, let's do it right, and let's be responsible in regards to how we can bring resources back to the communities that have been negatively impacted, and includes our community here indirectly. So there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of uncertainty, and I'm sorry if I've rambled on for 15 minutes here now, and you're walking away with saying, Jesus, what the heck is he talking about? There's a lot of moving parts, and we are, we, we are in a very bad position that we're holding on. I know another question that's going to come up, so I might as well just throw it out there right now, because it seems like everyone's asking about this, is the potential for retirements have. You know, there's a, many people at state government that are looking to get out, and I think there's many people at local government that are looking to get out. And, you know, I've been, this isn't my first rodeo. I've been through situations like this at a municipal level in 2001, the 9/11, and 2009, with the, the Great Recession. Those retirement incentives come at a cost. It's something that just can't be, oh, God, we're going to do this, this makes up perfect sense. We need to really make sure that it works well financially. But I can tell you this, the longer Washington dethers, the better the opportunity. At some point, we're going to have to do something, because if there's no aid coming from the state, the state of, from the federal government, and you can't really rely on the outcome of the November election, because the November election will probably not be decided until December, maybe January. At some point, the state's got to act and start shedding public employees. And there's one way, there's two ways of doing it. One is to lay them off, which the state ends up picking up a part of that cost. The other way is to do a retirement incentive, if it makes sense, with the understanding that for every two to three positions you eliminate, you're only able to backfill one or two, one. So that's, I, I want to throw it out there because I anticipate that being a question. I probably talked a little bit too much, which is my biggest downfall, but just trying to give you some insight of where things are at. I know it doesn't, I know it, for Jennifer and Stacy, it's not helpful, because they're like, what do we do? And that's part of why you guys have to have these discussions.
So, John, this is Jennifer. So can you talk to us about the holdbacks on the expense driven aid from the last school year? That was a total surprise for us, and it amounts to about $400,000 that we're floating right now through our reserves. Can we expect to see that money soon?
I can't tell you that. I cannot tell you that. I have large regional nonprofits that are waiting on millions of dollars from October of last year. They still haven't gotten. So I, I can't tell you that. You know, once again, we've been down this road before. They, they do have these little gimmicks that they will go through. We're advocating for it, but I, I just don't know when, Jennifer, I just don't know.
So, and we also talked to you about the smart schools monies that we are waiting for our reimbursement, and that's about $500,000. So, so that's almost a million dollars that we're floating right now, and we're just waiting for reimbursements. Do you have any ideas about when we might see that money?
I do not know. I do not know. It is a matter of cash flow. We've been borrowing money to pay our bills here at the state, and at the same token, we have obligations. I'd like to think things are going to break open soon, but they can't happen soon enough. And, you know, part of the challenge is, and you read that Times Union article today, you know, some people will breathe a sigh of relief, saying, oh, thank God, they haven't cut us yet, which is actually true. But the reality is, you don't want to get halfway through the year and find out that there's going to be a 20% cut. Although I think we would fight to, we would obviously be fighting to minimize that by every stretch of imagination.
So, it, as you said, that we haven't received any reduction yet in state aid. So we're expecting our first state aid payment to the district in about two weeks, okay, the end of the month. We don't know what to expect. Nobody has told us.
And we haven't gotten that information yet either. I imagine as we get closer, we'll start to get some, usually we'll get a little bit of insight ahead of time. I was a little bit encouraged by some of the news coming out of Washington today, that they're actually talking again about doing things, particularly in regards to the realm of education, but it's going to have restrictions, that they have to be all in person to get that aid, which makes it difficult.
Would hybrid work? Would hybrid work?
I, I would be a champion for hybrid, that's for damn sure, because there's there's
They're in person, exactly.
There are families that are just not comfortable. And as much as I firmly believe, you know, the best educational opportunity is children in the classroom with their teacher, I can't disrespect the fact that families have concerns. And you have to understand, this is a health crisis. This isn't just one of those things that we're just doing for, for the heck of it.
Right. I'm very proud of all of our teachers, our staff. We've been able to accommodate all of our families' wishes and choices, whether in-person or in a virtual model. So...
That is much better than most. I'll just tell you that right now. Much better.
We had a very smooth opening. Everything is going really, really well, and, and we just want it all to continue. But we have very difficult decisions to make without any real information.
So I am reading, just, I, I, if, I don't know if you can see my visual, I went dark for a second, because my, my, my day wife, Pat Fahey, who I spent a lot of time with in Albany, because we've been, we represent Albany City School District, was tweeting, texting back and forth. But the governor, I'm going to read this to you, because it is news, it's from the Wall Street Journal, the governor Cuomo's administration will fully disperse about $2.5 billion in school aid planned for later this month, a budget division spokesperson says, retreating from a policy of withholding 20%. So I didn't make that up. It comes from my friend Jimmy Vealkind, who reports for the Wall Street Journal, but there's an answer to your question. Part, one of your questions. You there?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the Board of Education members and/or from our school business official, Stacy Mackey?
Hi, John.
Margaret? Who's saying hello?
That was Margaret. I think they were just trying to figure out some sound stuff.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes, you are.
So I just had a question. The one thing that we keep hearing is that, you know, it's not fair. We come, we come from a district that's heavily reliant on state aid. We have a high poverty rate. Our families here don't have the same opportunities as some of the families in the suburbans and the more affluent school districts, and we know that it's a struggle. And we worked really hard to balance this budget this year, and knowing that there's going to be this constant fluctuation, I know that you've said that you're a proponent of speaking up about the high-needs districts and the percentage of aid that could be cut. I'm just wondering where your peers might be in the same situation.
For the most part, they're all on the same page. Most of the Assembly members actually represent, well, they represent one of two places, right? They, they represent mostly cities. So it's New York City and the other large cities. So we're all dealing with the same issue. You know, the challenge we have is that the Senate still has a very, Long Island is a very challenging issue. And the Senate is holding on to keep their members on Long Island. Long Island gobbles a lot of the shares of money. One of the things I've talked about in my letters to the governor is, while we're at it, there have been districts, particularly on Long Island, and some in Westchester, but they don't, Westchester doesn't get a lot of money from the state, to be honest with you, because they're very wealthy. But in Long Island, you have districts that have been funded at 107, 115% for the past several years, whereas Cohoes and Waterbury and Troy have been in the 60s and 70s. It's been increasing, you know, it's been increasing, you know, as I always say, from, you know, for the last eight years up until this past year, education funding went from $21 billion to $29 billion a year. It's an $8 billion increase. But the reality is, we were recovering from the 2009 recession, we were recovering from the dreadful gap elimination adjustment. And it, it, it really stinks, because finally, the last two or three years, superintendents could actually talk about programs they were starting to build upon and expand, which was not the conversation when I went to the Assembly in 2013. It was mostly about how dreadful gap elimination is. So to answer your question, the majority of my colleagues in the Assembly are firmly on the same page. The Senate, I can't speak for 100%. I know Senator Breslin and I overlap with the five city districts. We are both on the same page. I can tell you that. It's a good question.
Hi, John. This is Stacy Mackey. How are you?
I'm good, Stacy. How are you?
Can you hear me? Okay. As you know, Cohoes checks all the boxes. We're urban school district, a high-needs school district, and we're also a school district that's been identified as being in fiscal stress.
Yep.
So we have to balance our cash flow very carefully. As Dr. Spring had mentioned, we're floating the anticipated 1920 revenues that were withheld this summer. In some cases, that money was expended in 1819. So it's, you know, it's greater than a year that we've been floating that. And then we've also been floating the smart schools money. So when we talked about the potential for 20% reductions in state aid, we discussed a quarterly approach. So with the first quarter being July through September, and we're able to make adjustments and modifications to get through the first quarter. I won't say it's been a painless process, but it hasn't been as painful as it's going to be very soon. October is going to be the month where we need to make adjustments. And it doesn't seem like our timeline is going to fit the, the state and the federal government timeline. We're going to need to take action in October. The plan is to assume the 20% and then readjust in quarter three and quarter four. I just want to ask your opinion on the quarterly approach versus other districts that have taken action in, in, in quarter one.
Without getting into specifics about other districts, because there are other complicating factors of why districts, for example, decided to go virtual to start. So that's been part of their challenge. I think, and this is based on our conversations, your quarter-by-quarter approach makes perfect sense. It's, it's measured. There are key benchmarks of state aid flowing or not flowing, where you're going to have a sense of where things are at. I, I think it's a responsible approach. I wish I had the, the, just the magic ball to tell you that everything's going to be fine, but I just can't tell you that. It'd be just, it'd be inappropriate for me to say that.
Thank you, John.
Hello? Hey, John, this is Rick Jackson. So first round of federal money that got distributed, we saw a direct reduction in state aid. If the federal government does end up pouring more money in, are we going to see a similar reaction from the state budget side?
In regards to restoration, yes. That, you know, that, that will be, obviously, if the federal government delivers, education, I can guarantee you, will be the first and highest priority. It's, it's on everyone's mind. And, and, and of course, those who are in the other areas aren't going to like to hear that, but just, that's just, let's face it, between education and Medicaid, those are our two largest expenditures on our state budget. A state budget of 170, probably 170 billion right now. Education and health make up about $65 billion of it. We make up the lion's share, and those are the areas that we, we need to protect. You know, Medicaid's going to continue to grow as more and more people still remain out of work. That's another, that's another issue, but it's, it's a real issue. Hello? Hello?
All right, John, I, I think we're, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. So I don't think we have any other questions from any other board members unless Matt has a question?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. So on behalf of the entire city school district here in Cohoes, we are grateful for your continued advocacy for all of our students and all of our staff and our entire community. And we are very grateful and thankful that you joined us this evening.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. And I know you two will never be accused of being strangers, that's for darn sure, because you're constantly advocating for the district, and that's your job, and, and I recognize that and appreciate it. And, you know, the other thing I can say is this, is that as much as it's tough and no one's happy, and there's a lot of uncertainty, this too will pass, and we're going to get through this. This too will pass, and we're going to get through this one way or the other. Maybe painful, maybe not so painful, but. As long as we continue to have dialogue and work with each other and 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 focus on what our main priority is, which is the students. I'm confident that we will, we'll get through this, um, one way or the other. So thank you very much, and I'm going to bid you adieu.
All right, thank you and have a great evening. Bye bye. So with this. Our school business official Stacy Mackey will continue with our presentation on our budget.
Good evening, so this next slide represents. Uh, just a reminder of action that was taken over the summer. Uh, so this Department of Budget began approving. Um, scheduled payments at 80% of the otherwise scheduled amounts in July. Uh, so the Cohoes impact, and I did update the Boosie's number from the last time we met to the actual. Uh, the Boosie's aid impact is 180,000. Excess cost 100,000. Pre-K 126,000. And our future ready grant 12,000, so that's over, uh, $400,000. That is impacting our cash position now. Uh, we're floating those monies, we've booked them as receivables. And if, for whatever reason, we're unable to collect those monies, that will impact our fund balance. Okay, next slide, please. So a picture of what the 20% state aid reduction would be. Um, if we look back at our budgeted figures for 2021 state aid. Uh, the dollar figure was just over 24 million dollars. Um, so if the 20% reductions do occur, that would be a 4.8 million dollar. Revenue impact on an annual basis for the 2021 school year. Um, if, again, if it's a reduction and not a withhold, meaning a temporary situation, if it's an actual. Reduction, the Department of Budget, uh, does have to provide a detailed plan to the legislature. Um, so that is anticipated, um, if there is no federal relief. Um, in the upcoming months. So as we had discussed, we have taken a quarterly approach. Um, to the shortfall, the the planned, uh, anticipated shortfall, I'll call it. Um, the reductions are going to impact all levels, um, programming, support services, staffing, facilities. Extracurricular, and as I previously mentioned, we are a school in fiscal stress, so it's going to impact our financial wellness. We are going to have to monitor cash flow very tightly all year long. Next slide, please. So I'll speak to quarter one, and I've been talking about this for a few weeks now. Uh, we do have a a quarter one, so the school year starts, the fiscal year starts July 1st, so quarter one is July through September. So we immediately started planning on reductions and savings that would, uh, least impact, uh, people. Um, so TRS, uh, an actual expense came in under budget 173,000, so that's an actual savings. We implemented a spending freeze in the month of, uh, early August. Uh, the only exclusions are health and safety. Um, so, uh, PPE items, for example, are anticipated, uh, annualized savings is 272,000, so that would be, the phrase would be. For the entire school year, so it was put into effect before school started, and it would last through the whole school year. Uh, we've also been, uh, speaking with Boosie Service, uh, Boosie's and identifying services. Uh, that we are able to, uh, reduce or cancel, which included specialized services. Distance learning and records management, anticipating savings are 187,000. We also worked with our partner, uh, our pre-K partner, we renegotiated our pre-K contracts. And then we termed, uh, our transitions contract at the high school. As well as our weeding and pruning contract, uh, we gave 30-day notice, so that's effective October 1st. And anticipated savings, again, annualized 269,000. We've also, uh, take a look at each one of our, uh, staffing needs to identify if it's a position that we absolutely have to fill. Or if we can, um. Repurpose some of our existing, uh, people resources, we were able to save. About 86,000, uh, not filling, um, a few positions. And then, uh, these are items that we need to talk about and come up with a, uh, a plan for for the fall. Uh, club activities, uh, the proposed, um, is to have the high school run the National Honor Society Club. The Senior Class Advisor Club and the Yearbook Club. Uh, no other clubs would run that would, uh, have an annualized savings of about 73,000. We would still have to have the central, uh, treasurer and the internal auditor for that. Uh, sports activities, we've been invited, uh, our athletic director here tonight to to talk about this in more detail. Um, but in this cost proposal, uh, for the fall, it would be varsity only, and that would be 140,000. There's obviously pros and cons to that. Uh, but that would get us to our goal of 1.2 million for quarter one. So I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Hino to talk about, uh, our athletic programs. And, uh, give some updates, I know you had a meeting today, Mr. Hino.
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay, great, uh, thank you. So yes, the Colonial Council, um, has been, uh, poring over guidance that NISPA has released in section two, and. We are currently deciding what the best course of action for our league is. Many schools, uh, their three schools have opted out of sports in our league so far. For the fall, just the fall season. And some area leagues near us in the last few days have, uh, pushed. Some of their fall sports, if not all of them, to the fall two, uh, season, which would start in March 1st. Um, so we are, as a league, we are meeting on Friday with. All athletic directors, principals, and superintendents to discuss, uh, our plan for the fall. We do have several schools who who are planning to play sports this fall. Uh, but we do have some undecideds, and just, uh, just shortly before the meeting, our one modified participant, uh. Notified us that they will not be participating in modified sports for the fall season.
So as I had, uh, discussed earlier, quarter two is where cash position, uh, becomes, uh, pretty dire for us. Uh, so quarter two is October 1st to December 31st. So at the next board meeting, uh, we'll talk about cash flow projections. Um, it's typical for us to run negative, uh, in the summer months. As we have the TRS, uh, payments that come in and 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 state aid is. Basically, uh, not existent over the summer, um, so we'll talk about the July. August and September actual cash flow, and then we'll talk projections, uh, through quarter two. So we'll continue to communicate fiscal updates, uh, both at the state and federal, uh, levels as they become available, obviously. Uh, we do have a meeting scheduled with, uh, all of our bargaining units on 9/22, uh, so that's next week. Um. Possible reductions, if we have a true, uh, 20% reduction. Um, for the year would be 60 positions district wide across all levels. So we talked about for quarter one, we identified 1.2 in savings and reductions, so that would fill the 3.6. Remaining gap. So what we would need to do is amend our instructional plans, take a look at our in-person versus virtual. Offerings and modify those plans. We would anticipate taking board action in the month of October, this is because the longer we wait. The bigger the hole gets, and it it'll be more difficult. To save money the longer we wait, right? So 12-month staff have been active since the month of July. By October, it'll be month four, and then we have all of our 10-month staff that were, um. Are added to the, to the payroll, so September starts. Uh, we have reduced payrolls in the summer months, but September is our first. Month where we see the increase because the majority of our staff is is active. So quarter three and quarter four, again, we will have to monitor our cash flow projections, we're monitoring it daily. Um, we'll continue to communicate the updates as they become available at all levels. We'll reevaluate our cash position. Our revenues, the anticipated revenues versus actual. And our expenses, and we'll make adjustments as appropriate, uh, if we're able to. Uh, modify the spending plan, if revenues are better than anticipated, um, then that's a a success story, and we'll make adjustments as necessary. Hopefully, they won't be worse. Okay, next slide, please. So this is the point, uh, in the evening where we need to talk about. Uh, potentially, the fall season starts for sports next week. Um, so we need to be clear on. Um, what direction we're going to take for the fall sport, so we need to, uh, have a discussion about that. Uh, then any feedback about the, uh, quarter two and, uh, quarter three, quarter four plans? Quarter one? There you go.
No athletics.
So varsity, running varsity only. Uh, would be 140,000, these are estimated numbers, we don't know what's going to happen with transportation, normally we share buses. You know, there's practices that we, uh, have in place, obviously, we wouldn't purchase, uh, uniforms, new uniforms, uh, very minimal supplies. We wouldn't have an announcer, uh, there's lots of logistics that need to be, uh, taken care of, and then outdoor is obviously an easier answer than indoor sports, so winter, I suppose we'd. Uh, come back to the table and be talking about health and safety concerns and how we're going to deal with that, so these are all estimated numbers. Um, so varsity program only, uh, between, uh, Mr. Hino and myself. Uh, I'm thinking it's about $140,000, uh, savings, uh, we 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 met and kind of scrubbed the numbers. Um, obviously, no sports at all, about $270,000. If we were to run, um, varsity and modified. It would probably reduce the savings about 40,000, so it'd probably, uh, be about $100,000 savings. Uh, but then we wouldn't meet our quarter one goals. Yes.
Uh, Stacy, this is, this is Jennifer, so what, so as Jeff mentioned that the sec, the, our section and our Colonial Council group is getting together on Friday to discuss. Two possible options, so what if they decide that we're going to push off to the March 1 start date to the fall two? Um, all low-risk and moderate sports, so it wouldn't be an expenditure yet. It it could be also something that we maybe reevaluate, what about that option?
So we could do that, um, I would ask that the board take action at our next meeting, uh, on the athletic, uh, director, there's an MOA. Uh, so I would ask that the board take action, um, on the athletic director, and then we also have dues. Uh, that we are required to pay to be, uh, part of the Colonial Council, um, so we would pay, uh, those minimal. Uh, expenses, but sure, we could, uh, choose to. Um, revisit, uh, the fall sports. And what they're calling the fall two season, which I I believe is a March 1 start date right now. That is an option, sure.
So Jeff, I'm just wondering if you can, um, maybe talk to us a little bit about. I mean, you're in the position and you've you've been having these conversations with. Other athletic directors, and and we've seen, um, some other, like you said, some other leagues who have dropped out. What's your feelings on on if it was, we were in a position of pushing to fall two as far as participation goes? Um, if it was varsity only, you're saying, you you had mentioned that there's no other modified teams playing? In the council, uh, and. Um, if there was any other JV, I don't want to throw too much at you here.
Um, so yes, there's. This week has kind of been like a domino effect, um, you had a a league on Monday. Choose to move all their fall sports to March 1st. And and, uh, each day of the week, it seems, uh, another league has moved. Either all of their sports or their high-risk sports like soccer, um, to to the fall two season. Which kind of set off in motion, um, our, ours, our schools in our league to to look at, uh, what we're doing. Uh, we, like I said, we did have three schools opt out of all sports for the fall. Uh, this first fall season starting 9/21. Um, a lot of these things are 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 kind of fluid where. A lot of the athletic directors are saying they're going to have certain levels. Um, but I don't think anyone really knows for sure, um, because they're having meetings like these with their, with their, their Board of Education and their superintendent, so. Um, I think we'll get a little more clarification on Friday, uh, when when everyone meets together, but there are some that are going to off, offer modified sports. From what they're saying today, um, and and some who are on the fence, and then, uh, I I do know of. Two in the league right now that are not going to offer modified sports this fall season.
Um, so the other part of that conversation was participation, or the question was participation, um. I'm just curious to know how many students we would be looking at, um, if we were to go to varsity only, and I know this is a rough figure, like. How many student participants do we usually have, what would that mean? Um, and if we have student athletes who are in multiple seasons, will we be able to field teams in fall two? Uh, with the spring season, and I know that you may not have this information, and that's okay, I just thought I'd ask if you did.
So. I do have, uh, quite a bit of information as far as, uh, students impacted. Um, so last year, uh, for all three seasons, um, we had a total of 573 kids signed up for sports at all three levels. And when you factor in how many kids play multiple sports, that's actually 302 actual students. Who who are, who play modified JV and varsity sports throughout the entire year, um, and it's 302 because, again, they play multiple sports and we don't count them twice. What was the other part of your question?
In fall two with the participants from spring sports.
Yeah, so that's a great question, um, when NISPA originally put the guidance out, there was overlap and, um, there, many people were thinking that there were school. Children, students, we're going to have to make decisions on what sports they were going to play. Our section two has, uh. Uh, amended and are are starting to put some proposals out where. There would only be a week of overlap between winter, fall, fall two and spring. Um, but that really wouldn't impact kids not being able to play that sport because you could carry over practices from the previous season, so. Um, the layout from what they're proposing right now, which is not, which is not final. So the layout from what they're proposing right now, which is not final, we have an Athletic Council meeting for the whole entire section next week. But with the proposed dates that they're putting out, it would be likely that students would not have to choose the sport that they play. Over and out.
Okay, and then I have one last question. What work has already been done and who has already been involved, if anyone, in the realm of athletics for the 2021 school year? If anybody's been employed doing anything at all?
So our coaches have not been able to meet with their student athletes at all, and that's guidance from NISPA Section 2 on or off campus. You know, some coaches are just keeping in contact with players to let them know individual workouts. And myself, I've spent some time during the summer, you know, fulfilling my duties as athletic director, you know, during the summer months to try to prepare for the season that we, it just kept getting pushed off on us. But there are duties during the summer that I did complete.
Okay, guess one last thing, maybe? Sorry. Do you know, and I hate to keep referencing this Fall 2, but I'm seeing more and more every single day pushing off to Fall 2, which is why I'm asking the questions. But although there haven't been coaching appointments, would there be any conflicts? Because we do have coaches that coach multiple sports.
There potentially could be some conflicts between sports if there is a one-week overlap between each of those seasons. It may be something that can be worked out based on practice schedules and times, but we won't know that until we really get a final say from Section 2 on what those dates would look like, when games would start, how many practices before each game. Because they've changed some of those recommendations just due to the fact that kids haven't been playing high school sports since the almost, you know, early March.
I did just want to jump in with a quick question.
Mr. Huno. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Pete. I just wanted to jump in. We had a question from Stacy Nolan, which was sports-related, and I wanted to chime in with it now rather than wait while we have Jeff here and everything. It was just a question on whether students who are virtually only, or if we go to like, you know, are they able to play if you're in a virtual-only model?
So yes, students who have selected the fully virtual model are also eligible to participate in our sports program. And that was part of our reopening plan.
Hi, this is Pete. I've just got a question. We're looking at sports from a financial point of view, just from a safety and health point of view with COVID. Are we, assuming that we do even have anybody to play, are we in a position where we can track the students and the adults from visiting schools? Are they in a position that they can track us if there was an outbreak? If somewhere, we could point back to a specific child? Are we worried that schools are going to start blaming each other if there's an outbreak? So we had to close because School X had an outbreak, and we had a soccer team over there, or whatever? We confident that we can keep our kids safe?
So Peter, you bring up some great points about health and safety. I have a concern about congregating, students congregating, maybe being a little bit more relaxed. We're very strict during the school day. The guidelines that we follow during the school day are very, very rigid and prescribed. That is a worry of mine, that after school, there may be congregating, and people may relax some of the social distancing and mask standards that we have. So that's one thing. And if we are sending students to another school district, that is a risk. But, you know, that is a risk. So I'd like to have Jeff speak about those issues now.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's something that we've spent most of our week in the Colonial Council Athletic Directors discussing. We actually have put together guidelines for sports, whether practicing here at Cohoes High School or traveling to other schools. We have spectator guidelines. So we have put together quite a bit of guidance for our schools. NISPA has also put out quite a few documents on, you know, what's expected for each individual sport, especially for the fall. We instituted a mask policy that all athletes are expected to wear a mask on the field unless they had a doctor's note saying that they were unable to wear one, which kind of aligns with the opening plan. We would limit guests to two people per student athlete. They would be given laminated cards for those people to check into each game, and the spectators checking into the game would write their name and contact information. And our athletic directors would send a form each day for the teams competing against each other with the student athletes and the fact that they did their health screening along with their coaches.
So we talked about the financial and all the other questions that were ahead, and the health. But I just want to talk for a minute about the social-emotional aspect that sports provide. You've been incredibly thorough in making every preparation, and I'm so grateful to you and your colleagues in the council, preparing for us to be able to offer this if we could. I think it's really important that we don't discount the number of students that these programs serve and where we can preserve this. I think it's an important part of allowing these kids to get back to some sort of normalcy or have something to look forward to. And I just wanted to thank you again. I know it was not easy. I mean, I sat in budget meetings with you, and to get to that number, I know how much you gave up for these kids. So thank you for doing that.
Matt, would you like to go ahead and ask the questions and read the questions for us?
Yes, that would be great. And just to chime in on Nadia's point, you know, the main reason I'm actually at home today is because just this week I started doing sports myself. And just to reiterate the social-emotional point of view, I don't think it realized how, you know, important it was for me as an adult even to get out there and play. But I was positively giddy to be able to do that. And I just hope that, you know, with budgetary reasons and everything, that our students are able to do that as well. Because it is so important to their growth and just kind of positivity and well-being in general. So some of the additional questions we got related to sports were a question from Blaine Schaefer, which was if we're talking about going virtual, why are we worrying about keeping money for sports? I fully support sports as my son played, but kids can't sit in person in school. Jennifer, is that, do you want to try an initial attempt at that question?
Again, this is a decision that we've brought here tonight for discussion, and, you know, we will go ahead and do whatever the Board of Education directs us to do.
So from my perspective, the reason we're talking about virtual at all down the road is budgetary. And the reason we're talking about, you know, sports is also budgetary. They're both budget-related items. If we end up going virtual for a separate reason, that makes this all moot. But right now, all of our decision-making is primarily about budget and making sure we can pay for the things that we need to pay for.
And Matt, I'd like to add, our goal is to stay open and to continue the in-person, the hybrid, and the fully virtual model if parents, you know, have selected that this school year. We are committed to that, and that's what we're working towards.
Another question we received is from Kalen Dawson, which was just asking if we're cutting sports, are we cutting arts and music programs equally? And I know to start that the arts and music programs, to a degree, are a certain portion of that is we are legally obligated to provide some semblance of those programs. But, and I don't believe there are any mandates as far as sports programs, but you can also chime in, Jennifer, as well.
Again, none of these decisions have been made, so we're bringing it up for discussion this evening.
Is that accurate, though? Am I on the right track where to some degree, there is some art or music requirement, at least at the high school level?
Where it's credit-bearing, absolutely, and elementary and middle school. And Jeff would like to make a comment.
Just going back to the previous question about if we're, you know, partially virtual or if some students are virtual, why are we discussing sports? Definitely the social-emotional, the effect that this has had on students. There's plenty of articles out there and research that have, you know, said that our children are hurting or depressed because of, you know, the activities that they're not likely, not allowed to do anymore because of COVID-19. As far as the virtual part, my understanding is we, you know, we have gone partially virtual, you know, to limit the amount of people that come into contact with each other. Based through NISPA and Section 2, we believe we can give sports, play sports with socially distance or masks on, so that does help prevent the spread of it. So, and the last thing is, you know, we want our kids healthy, and we want them exercising. And exercising, you know, it's good for your immune system, and there's nothing better to fight off illness than a good immune system.
Another question we got was from Wendy Kolakowski, which was about if the district chooses to only have varsity sports, is it an option for middle school students, you know, typically modified, to try out and possibly compete at the varsity level if they pass the physical assessment and make the team? Which, this is probably not a question for you, Jeff.
Right, so the athletic placement process, would you like to talk about that, Jeff?
Yeah, so a middle school, a middle schooler jumping all the way to the Varsity level is a pretty big leap. Most of the students, and I stress most, not all, most of the students that we use the advanced placement process on are usually to go to the JV level. So going from a middle school level to the Varsity level, like I said, is a big jump. But yet, there is the opportunity to do that in particular sports, and if they are able to pass the advanced placement process.
And Jeff, I know that the email mentions the physical assessment, but it is, you know, just to your point, it is a big jump, not only physically, but, you know, mentally to be training and playing with folks that are quite a different, you know, age gap at that point. So I know that that's something we are obligated to factor in as well.
But that's all part of the advanced placement process. Most people think it's just a physical fitness test, and that's the last part of it. One of the big parts for me as an athletic director is just that social-emotional piece of a seventh or eighth grader, you know, hanging around with a senior. You know, there's quite a big difference in age there. So that is a big part of that piece.
And another question, which at least I believe is our last one on sports here for the moment, but a question from Mary Kiffey, which is why are we entertaining sports but not even going to hire open in-filled teaching positions?
Well, we were looking at savings and looking to utilize existing resources in the school district, and we were able to cover some of those unfilled positions in other ways. So that was our goal, and we felt that was a victory because it fit the students' needs as well.
Matt, we also had a comment from Renee Snyder. I think that came in yesterday.
I wasn't sure if that, because it didn't come to the BOE comment email, I wasn't sure if that was something that they wanted us to read at the meeting or not. But the email comment from Renee was just talking about the understanding, well, actually, let me pull it up. It reads as, "I recognize the severity of the financial cuts that our district, along with many other districts across the state, are facing, and I fully understand the enormous pressure you are under to come up with an equitable solution to bridge this gap. With that being said, I urge you to consider all options carefully before final decisions are made. This plea is personal for me, as my oldest child is a senior. He is a senior who could be a four-year starter in two varsity sports and a three-year starter in another. He learned work ethic, sportsmanship, time management, success and defeat as a student-athlete at Cohoes. He's a leader to classmates and a team captain on the field and court. I can't look him in the eye and tell him it's over. I can't tell him he will not have an equitable opportunity as his peers in more suburban districts. You are all aware that colleges and universities do not look at grades and test scores when determining the best fit for their admissions process. So to take away extracurriculars for our students, you are taking away potential for their future. We chose not to send our children to private schools, and I bragged about the amazing education and opportunities they have been receiving in this district as proud Cohoes parents. But this is about so much more than sports, as we are not looking for college now, I believe it's, we are now looking for college athletic scholarships, but it's about providing our students the same opportunities as those of their peers just down the street. I beg you to consider all options, and don't forget about the students who will not have a year to recover from the choices that are made." So that is Renee's email, but, and I appreciate Renee and everyone who reaches out with comments to us. These conversations that we're having are incredibly challenging. It's important to discuss. And obviously, you know, when we talk about not having the same opportunities as the folks in more suburban districts, that gets right to what we talked about with our Assemblyman, that the cuts, the proposed cuts across the state are not equitable, and we're dealing with this unequitable situation. And that puts us in a very rough spot about what kind of programs or opportunities are we going to get rid of? Because to make cuts, we're going to be getting rid of opportunities to some students. Unfortunately, that's what it comes down to. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in with anything there or any of these questions before we move on.
We did have one last comment in the spam folder from Kate Lamica, and I think it's kind of a good segue for us to maybe have conversation about other budgetary things that were on the proposed. But it says, "With probable cuts, when will the district notify staff of their seniority status as well as possibilities of being cut?" So I think we've hashed out some of the athletic things, and maybe we can go back into some of the other cuts that we had talked about. If Aaron could put that up for us.
So just to answer Kate's question, I believe that Tara has shared the seniority lists with the union leadership in the district. But if not, I'll check on that tomorrow.
And there was one other comment, since this was also a perfect segue, is very similar from Blaine Schaefer, which was, "What do these cuts mean for my children in school? Will they be fully virtual? And what does that mean for my current position?", which is, as, you know, we can see, I'm sure a lot of people are asking, as we talk about, you know, potentially 60 positions district-wide that we'll be looking at. And from my perspective... And from my perspective, you folks can correct me, but we have made no decisions as to what that could look like. It's, anything is up in the air, we're evaluating everything. You know, starting from kindergarten all the way up to our high school positions, everything is being looked at, what, you know, what makes the most sense in this terrible situation that we're in? How do we maximize the opportunities for our students and, you know, opportunities now, but also the future? You know, we have to balance, we know that educating our students in elementary is ever-important. If they miss those opportunities, they're set back forever. And we have to balance that with our seniors, who are looking to get to college and opportunities. And if they don't get those opportunities, then maybe they don't get into those colleges that would set them on the right path. So it's an incredibly difficult balancing act, as we're looking at across the district at all kinds of positions. I did have a related question, maybe perhaps for Stacy. If we get to October and the first quarter, that article turns out to be true, that John mentioned, that the first quarter, we get full aid for, how do we continue to move forward? You know, it's, you know, we don't know what's going to be held for the rest of the year. You know, how much do we, are we still looking at this, you know, 60 positions district-wide? Or are we able to, you know, I think we still have to be cautious and, you know, in all likelihood, make some cuts, but, you know, how can we lower that number? What does that look like?
So yes, we would be able to modify, and that's actually part of the plan. So we would continuously evaluate cash flow, and cash flow is dependent on state aid. So if numbers were better than anticipated, we would reevaluate based off of the change in the cash position. We would reevaluate our expenses, and we would make adjustments as appropriate. And we would do that through a collective process. So similar to the meeting tonight, we would talk about anticipated revenues being better, what the dollar amount might be, and then proposed adjustments. And that would, that could be bringing folks back if they were laid off in quarter two. So yes, that could happen.
It's one of the payment schedules.
So our first state aid payment is scheduled usually for the end of this month, but when we look on the website, there's nothing there. So the first aid payment is scheduled for the end of this month, so we hopefully will have some idea in a couple of weeks.
So these conversations that we've had about the cuts that are being proposed right now, like, some of this, it's a lot more than anything that any of us have ever discussed before, and we don't have any idea what this even means. So, you know, it feels like there's just a lot up in the air, and maybe we're not making progress really in having these conversations. Not that they are definitely important conversations, but there's just so much that we don't know. You know, with John's comment about maybe there's not a potential, not an aid reduction, we don't know if that's going to happen, you know, but there's 60 people that is listed on this PowerPoint presentation that we have no idea what that even means.
What it means is, if we have a 20% reduction, we've only identified 1.2 of a $4.8 million gap. So to fill the rest, which would be $3.6 million, we would have to reduce staff by 60 FTEs, that's what that means. The information is constantly changing, and the state finances are dire. They're even holding cafeteria payments, cafeteria fund payments 20%, which never was brought up, so that was new today. So we, our cash position, right now, we are collecting taxes to meet payroll, because we're floating $1 million that is due to us from 1920. Smart Schools Bond money and expense-driven aids, and in some cases, that was spent in 1819.
So this doesn't even anticipate if we got a 20% delay in Smart Schools?
No, that's not factoring that in.
Just based on what they did.
Right. It's normal for school districts to constantly float money. It's normal. They're adding to that flow. And a small district like us, that only has so much in reserve and fund balance, can only float for so long. So, again, we will monitor cash flow. We're doing it daily. But I'm expecting if the state aid at the end of September is not 100%, I'm expecting that we're going to have to make reductions in the month of October. We need to be prepared to do that.
So I'd love to be prepared to do that, and I'm sorry if I misspoke. I understand the position that we are in. I know that this is going to be a difficult position. I'm just saying, you know, this is what we're getting flashed in front of us. Okay, we need to cut 60 staff. Well, I don't know what that means. None of us, you don't know what that means either. You just said the number 6-0, and that's what we're going to do? Right, but, you know, like, a custodian and cleaner makes a lot less money than, you know, a tenured teacher. So I guess, like, I'm asking if we have an idea of what the breakdown is. It's September 16th, you want us to take action on this in October? How are we supposed to take action when we don't even know what we're talking about?
You know, the entire. Of our payroll, what was budgeted, the budgeted figure. Last things that we've already identified as savings, and applying the gap, so the $3.6 million against that payroll, the budgeted payroll number, and then it's an equitable percentage across the administrative unit, the support unit, and the CTA unit. That's where the 60, the number 60 comes from. That's the calculation. That's just a financial calculation. The operational piece, there's only certain things that we can do to actually be able to operate with 60 fewer people. So that would be going to an all-virtual environment for some buildings, potentially.
As of October 1st?
No. As of, potentially as of sometime in September, depending on what the state and the federal government tell us. Potentially sometime in October. The 60 is the worst-case scenario. That's assuming 20%. That's the worst-case number.
So I would be unwilling to vote on a flip to virtual without having sat in a room with at least the Budget Committee and the administrators to line by line pick through and minimize every single thing that we can minimize in order to stay open until at least Christmas, because we don't have the devices, the kids don't have the bonds. It's not the right decision for kids to flip just to save money. It's hard work. It's easy to, I mean, the easiest and fastest way to get through this is to close. But I personally feel like we should be, if we have to meet three times a week, then I'm there. But I would like to do everything we can do to avoid closing. And I understand that the longer we wait, the less the savings, I understand that. But also don't know yet what's coming. I mean, I'd love to be prepared. I'd like, maybe if we could develop a list of what these cuts are going to look like, what the 60, where the 60 falls, how it impacts every building, if we could maybe have those discussions. A tiered, a tiered list, maybe, based on the amount of money that comes or doesn't come. I'd really like us to discuss every single option before we just go there.
This is an emergency now, not wait until the cuts are made in two weeks and then have to scramble. Like, we should be planning for worst-case scenario. We should be meeting, we should be doing all this, starting tomorrow, so that we're in the best position we could possibly be if it happens. And if, right, we celebrate.
I mean, in all fairness, we did say, like, in the summer, we needed to be making those decisions. The fact that we, like, filled positions and we have, you know, an instructional plan that now we have to back out of is not responsible, you know? And, you know, like Nadia said, we have to do what's best for our kids, and if that means that we give up our time to sit around a room and cut our pennies, let's figure it out. But, I mean, we have a Budget Committee. Let's use it.
I can hear you, Mark. It's a little bit.
Mark, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here between muting, unmuting, silencing my computer. I didn't hear what you said, Mark. Could you please repeat it?
I'm sure I can be heard. Am I coming through?
Yes, we can hear you.
We have a list of that we work from.
Sorry, Mark, you're, you are just cutting out. You, I think you were asking for a list of some kind of services or something that we can opt out of?
Are you talking about some BOSI services? That you would like us to opt out of?
Mark, since we're having trouble hearing you, if you want to, you know, text or email me, I'll try to get your questions in. I did, I just want to reiterate what folks have said so far. You know, it's, we're at the position now where we really need to dive in and know, you know, is this, what does this look like? You know, is it cuts to, you know, music and arts? Is it, you know, changing how we do kindergarten? You know, is it, what does this look like? What are our options on the table as far as how we get to these numbers? And I know that there's a lot involved in that, but it's clear now, you know, clear as day that we need to continue to, you know, move and understand our options as quickly as possible, so that we can be best informed about what the, you know, how we maximize opportunities with the cuts that we have to make to hit this, if we do have to make them.
If we go fully virtual, did all the Chromebooks come back? Are they all back from last year? No. How do we get those? How do we get kids? Kids aren't even getting on now. How are we going to teach them? We don't have those answers. We don't even have to get quit.
So, again, so this is serious. This is a critical point here, because we ordered 560 Chromebooks, and we received, I don't know, 59 at the middle school. We ordered these last May, and we're still awaiting the arrival of 500 more Chromebooks. They're telling us maybe October. But it's critical that we have these, so that we can utilize them in our schools. And if we do need to close because of COVID, then we can distribute them. So we are still trying to collect a few more from the high school. How many? So 20 outstanding Chromebooks, we're still trying to collect. Yes.
Okay, this is true again. I also have a question about teachers that don't have the right, they don't have a webcam. And they can't even teach from their room.
So, again, this is another challenge for us. We've had some, we've ordered webcams, they haven't come in yet. We've had some donations from, actually, Jen San Giacomo is so sweet. She donated 10 webcams to some of our virtual teachers. Do you want to talk about when equipment should be arriving?
Can you verify?
Yes.
So we have been going around and working on the virtual classrooms, Sully and Jen San Giacomo, that haven't had the equipment. At first, some of the equipment was starting to run in Chromebooks, and then it stopped. So, so far, Sully has replaced four Chromebooks with desktops. We do have some additional desktops. He's prioritizing virtual classrooms. We've been looking at lists together and webcams. He's been putting those around. I believe we do need more webcams. Remember, someone asked last time about a donation. We need webcams. So we had 10 that were linked to computers, and we have a few more that we can do, and they're not supposed to come in until October. The webcams are initially. But the other equipment we're replacing as needed when it isn't working. And we have a prioritized.
Okay, and how do we do more? Does that work for everybody?
So that's where, that's why the desktops, in many cases, are needed versus the Chromebook. So in some cases, it is working in Chromebooks well, in other cases, not. It does work better on a desktop. So at this point in time, all our fully-virtual elementary teachers are, have the equipment they need, either desktop replacements, et cetera, or laptops. And now, Sully's working with middle and high school.
So what about the students and parents? Have they been trained? Who's helping them with getting on and the liches and?
So the biggest issue first, in our virtual model, was not having the devices at home. We had a round one of, you know, device pickup, and then other parents notified us of round two at the elementary. It's just happened yesterday and today. And I know there has to be additional rounds at the secondary as well. Jen had, well, we had a virtual parent night.
On Monday night?
On Monday night. She pushed out the tech app. Today, we, she did an FAQ for all secretaries for when parents called, as well as sending them the tech app for having teachers brainstorm, and then we can refer from there.
And a tech resources page on our website.
We also sent home all usernames and passwords for parents. And so, any of the, at least at the elementary level, most of the connection issues have themselves. It wasn't, no. Some did not have Chromebooks. And Jen also asked all the secretaries today to please send to her, she sent them FAQs, but to please send to her any other questions that were coming their way, so that we could then put them in a document and address it.
So are we prepared to go virtual?
So, so are you talking about budget closure?
Any kind of closure.
We don't have the devices.
At this time, we don't.
I mean, we're talking about a budgetary closure as early as October 1st. and our staff doesn't have devices and our students don't have devices.
In many cases, the device issue has been an, uh, ordering, a receiving issue. We have many orders that we have not, not received. I think Stacy talked about it, um, last meeting, that, uh, we had Chromebooks that were ordered and were supposed to be shipped and then that was shut down for human rights violations in, in China. And, so, there's a big backlog. But you're right, we don't have the devices.
No, we need to stay open. Sue, we agree. We, that's our goal. We want it to stay open. We recognize all of those challenges.
We can't have a family with four kids in, you know, three different buildings, three different grade levels, whatever, middle school, high school, elementary, on one Chromebook. That's impossible.
Right.
I mean, the high school kids have to sign on every period. And they're very clear about that. You know, the message from the preschool, middle school and high school is those kids need to be on every period. So, what happens to the elementary child? No education.
So, right now, for the fully virtual model, we understand the students have been expected to be on, uh, all day. So, did we have had to do more than one Chromebook per family or it was not able to, you know? So, so we have done that.
So, every, every family 100% who has more than one child at a different building, 100% of those families have a Chromebook for each child at each building?
I can tell you that at the elementary, if they had two or three elementary students per family, they do, in terms of saying across the district.
If you have a high school, middle school and elementary child, however, through Chromebooks.
Through fully virtual, we're working on it. I can't say that it's all the way there yet.
So, somebody's not getting an education.
We are just, we have just been hearing as soon as yesterday that some families still needed Chromebooks, so that hadn't, it started, that hadn't responded originally. So, the surveys are generally sponsored by calls. So, as we are hearing about new families, we are going to.
Do we have just Chromebooks hanging around?
We don't have Chromebooks hanging around, so any Chromebooks when you send to fully virtual, then it decreases the number of Chromebooks that we have.
For the in-person students.
So, they can't, so they can't have an in-person class? Maybe two teachers can't have an in-person class at the same time because they're sharing Chromebooks? Is that possible?
Well, they can have an in-person class at the same time. They can't use the Chromebooks at the same time.
So, if they need the Chromebooks.
We're not, we're not one-on-one.
And the feedback I've gotten from the teachers of my kids is that they've, or that they're unlikely to get Chromebooks nearly as often as we have in the past. Because I could send my kids in with theirs every day, but if the school can't provide them for others, then there's no call, because they won't be used. And if anyone needs one, I highly recommend Best Buy. Just refresh the inventory a few times a day and you can find them every day.
Get them in the school district. We can't get a delivery for the school district, but.
Unfortunately, buying in bulk versus grabbing one here, two there, different type. I, it's not feasible, obviously, from a, uh, per, purchasing perspective.
Can I just go back to the, this is some of the tech help that are being provided. If you go on our Chromebooks website now, there is tech help right on the top bar. That is, that was not there. Parent can click on that and there are all tech resources, forums, the tech app to download. Contact, same thing on our staff resources page, there's now a tech session. I do know our elementary have sent usernames and passwords. They did that to the virtual, but now in case of COVID-19, they're sending a letter home with all parents with student's username and passwords, information about Google Classroom. So, a lot of work is being done. The devices, do we have them or not one-on-one?
Do we know 100% of our parents even know how to get on Google? What's they? Even how to sign on to a computer?
So, what we're doing in addition to the letters, so they all are getting hard copies of the letters, but the virtual ones got hard copies of the letters. Then there's a process and we're working through that process to help parents. And it's not enough to just have a website and a video, but that's the start. And then, when, when need and when we notice kids aren't connecting, then that's when we have to start making the calls and working on a personal basis.
Okay, so, um, lastly, sorry to, well, that was conversation, but what about club money? Um, I know there are clubs that carry thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, if we don't have clubs, can we use club money and who are they using it for? No, you can't?
It's robbing, it literally is robbing people.
Well, but the club, uh, agreed to purchase Chromebooks for the school, is what I'm saying. I don't mean you, the district takes it. Could the club vote to buy some Chromebooks? I'm just giving you an example. They give a monetary, some kind of gift that has.
They kept them out on it.
So, the process was actually that the students have a meeting.
The students' choice to decide whatever they decide to do with the money. Um, and they would have to take a vote, it would have to be recorded in the minutes. And then, yes, they could technically donate Chromebooks.
I know, and I didn't still pass on your vote. Don't eat honey for things. We could do that. I feel if there are no clubs, maybe we could ask for that. I don't know. Just a thought.
Big sales. Big sales too.
Want to just chime in with, um.
Oh, geez, you guys, I'm terrible at this.
Everything's complicated. Uh, I just wanted to chime in with, uh, Mark's question from earlier, which was just that he was requesting that the board, um, would be able to review all non-mandated contracts and positions as part of, you know, the 60 positions that we'd be looking at. So, all those external services contracts that are non-mandated. And I know we already cut some of those that Stacy mentioned, like, uh, the mowing, weeding and some of the other services. But if there are still non-mandated services and positions that, obviously, those are all things that we'll be looking at, at part of the discussion, so we'll need that information.
Matt, we can get that for you.
Are there any other questions from board members? I'm trying to chime in with, uh, questions from the community.
So, I'm just wondering if we can actually, like, firm up a plan of what we're going to do tomorrow and the next day. And, you know, so that we can have something together so that when we meet again, we can all be informed about what we're talking about. You know, suggested possibly the, the budget committee get together and, and maybe have those conversations. I know that you said is, it's across all units. I- is it also the, the non-contract employees? Uh, uh, have we looked at that as well? Is it, is it going through district offices, these cuts? Um, you know, if we're hitting every area, we should be hitting every area, because it hasn't been touched. You know, and maybe give us some information that we can reflect on and, and have a little time to look at, even a day to look at. Because, again, you know, we're seeing this right now, but I, I got it an hour before the meeting. It's, it's hard for us to make decisions and that's really what we need to do. We, we really need to be able to make decisions.
So, I, I, I also wanted to add that on September 22nd, uh, Stacy and I will be meeting with the bargaining unit leadership. And, uh, we will be talking about these, um, you know, possible reductions and if there are concessions that can be made. So, we will be having that conversation with them at that time. And you recall that I, I did have that conversation with the bargaining unit leadership in the spring. And I did ask for a true salary freeze, which would have been a $750,000 savings. Um, but now, as we are into the school year, that has, that has diminished that amount.
So, are you asking for, um, a give back from all of the units? Is, is that the plan?
It would be equal among all, yes. A, a true salary freeze or, you know, would be one of the things that we'll talk about.
And, and that's something that you, you would then have conversations with our, our, what are they, 9603 employees are?
Yes, they're included, yep.
Central office employees, because they're not part of the contract.
In the entire school district.
So, are we gonna, is there a negotiating? I mean, is there room to negotiate or is it gonna? I know the position offered in the spring was all, or thanks anyway. Is there any room?
Well, again, at this point, the cuts would be across all bargaining units, central office, they would be. Oh, concession.
Concessions, there's room?
I mean, what, listen, at this point, anything we can get is going to help save positions. And we can show them exactly what, you know, what the details are.
I know, um, Mark was just chiming in that, uh, you know, all of this is kind of compounded that everything, you know, I, it's very difficult for us to make the decisions because judgments haven't happened at the state and federal levels, right? So, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants while, you know, beholden to these other decisions and judgments that either haven't happened or may happen in the future. And we have, you know, shadowy hands of telling which ways things will go. And that's, you know, kind of compounding the position that we're in here. I, I just re- re, going back to the point about having information to work from. So, we have our meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting next, uh, Wednesday. And so, it would be great, you know, as part of your preparations to go in with the bargaining unit meeting on the 22nd, if, uh, you know, maybe, uh, ideally by the 22nd before that meeting, you have a clear picture of this is at least a set of, you know, a set of options of what this could look like, uh, how we could get to this money. Ideally, you know, we have two or three of these variants or things that we could, you know, uh, slide in or slide out, that would be options that we could, levers that we could pull. That, uh, you know, but ideally, that would give us, you know, a, a day of preparation. Um, you know, even before then would be great, but, uh, just realistically speaking, there's not a lot of time to pull this together. But, uh, having that information for that meeting to be prepared for that, but also for the board, would be, uh, really helpful for our discussions on the 23rd.
Mr. Jackson had asked a question. Uh, he asked what we will need to act on at the next board meeting, on the 9/23 board meeting. So, we will need to take action on the MOA for the athletic director at our next meeting.
And we would need to decide on sports by then as well?
Yes, the fall sports, if they happen. Uh, the season starts Monday, so yes. Uh, and we would have an update on the outcome of the 9/23 meeting as well, at that meeting. And then, um, we plan to talk about cash flow, obviously, at that meeting as well.
Also, the council meeting on Friday.
Right, now, I know what I'm additional.
So, we'll have, yeah, quite a few updates.
You get us, the council outcome, right, and then we can report it, please, thank you.
But I mean, reasonably, if we don't to come up with an alternative for the Q1 savings.
Right.
Any other board comments or questions?
28 not returned, please.
I, I just have, not really a question, but I'm, uh, just wondering if you think it'd be appropriate if you guys are having meetings with bargaining units, if, if, uh, a representative from the board could join you for those meetings?
Right, absolutely.
If there's no other comments or questions, then feel free to jump in and tell me. Uh, I know it's a little discombobulated, but I'm going to jump to community questions or comments. Now, so, uh, another comment we got was Deanna clarifying a point from earlier, which was that, uh, they had not received a seniority list. And so, I know that, uh, Jennifer, you mentioned you'll look at that and, um, we'll get that addressed. The, uh, another comment we got was that, or question, was that open positions were filled in other ways and they wanted to know how they were filled, uh, in other ways and what that meant, if we could expand upon it.
So, uh, in one instance, was filled through, uh, a virtual, a teacher who was teaching virtually. In other cases, there have been substitutes filling, uh, some positions. And in other cases, we have not filled positions. So, there, it, it depends on the specific position, but there's a, there's a, there's a range.
Reading teachers are all AIS teachers that are teaching classrooms, correct?
Right, so, we are down to the 1.5 AIS teachers in each of our elementary buildings and one advanced Skype is funded through Title I. And all the other, uh, reading slash AIS teachers have either been used to, um, teach, uh, in-person sections to reduce class sizes for social distancing for our teaching in our fully virtual model. So, that's how we were able to, to do that without, um, incurring any additional costs.
May I ask some questions? Um, I'm sorry, did you say that the, there were specialized classes that, oh, stuff? Is that what you said?
There, there's a range of classes. One, one is filled through a virtual teacher, a teacher's teaching virtually. There is, uh, um, reading positions currently are, uh, being filled by, by substitutes, permanent substitutes as we reassess. And, um, some other positions are, we have, are rearranging schedules and, and not.
So, what's happening with IUPs? Are those all being met because?
Yeah, one, reading, reading, reading teachers are the, uh, the substitute position that's not an IUP position.
So, there are no, I, all IUPs are being met by certified teachers, 100%?
They could be, they could be a substitute during us teachers leave or we could have looked at scheduling with other teachers to meet the IUPs that needs and not built. But the IUPs are being met.
And so, the subs are all, I mean, I, I can't imagine having, you know, having all these IUPs as a sub. They have to be met.
That would be a leave position, where, where a teacher is on a leave and so you have a substitute, certified substitute going on leave and that, that happens throughout.
I understand that, as long as they're certified, they are. Okay, thank you.
Another question we got, uh, from Stacy Nolan was, with the 60 positions that we've outlined here, and again, all of this is subject to change, all this information changes constantly, but those 60 positions that we've talked about at a level, would they be laid off for load? How would that work?
It would be a layoff. And again, it would be reevaluated uh, as information was available and as, uh, cash flow, cash circumstances changed. But it would be initially a layoff.
Uh, another comment from a community member, district employee, um, which, uh, there are actually a couple of questions, comments in, in here, so I'll, I'll go through them. But for the 60 staff cuts, uh, what positions? Again, that's up in the air currently and that's something that we're, uh, looking forward and really need to get more information on and are going to be hard at work at shortly. and are gonna be hard at work at shortly. And they commented to say thank you to Pete for highlighting the safety concerns of sports and COVID. And then also wanted to thank Media for the social emotional importance. But the 130,000 for varsity is multiple staffing, teaching positions. And they were asking if we cut fall sports at this time and revisited quarterly, if that was an option. And again, that the, we have talked about a couple of different things here with sports possibly. You know, what seems maybe most likely is that it gets shifted off to March. But we'll wait to hear back from Jeff's meeting with the athletic directors and district soon. And that'll also inform that decision as well. Another comment was if we could reevaluate some of the online programs we purchase. There are too many to utilize. And so that's, you know, maybe there are some savings there that we could evaluate. A, and there's a lot here, so we can go through these at the end. Or if anyone wants to jump in for a particular one that they think is important, feel free to. But if for the middle school gym could incorporate practice, preparation for modified JV sports, you know, maybe scheduling for a soccer oriented gym period. And, you know, specifically using our PE, I believe, as possibly, you know, some portion in lieu of not having modified JV sports, where we could do some more of those activities that would happen in sports in our PE class. A comments about how free food and sometimes money is wasted every day. How can we address this? And Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, the budget for the cafeteria and food is its own separate budget. And so unfortunately, that's, you know, it is a problem that we should address wasted food. But if we were to make those savings there, they wouldn't be things we could translate to teaching or salaries or other benefits. Is that correct?
That is correct, Matt. It's a separate and unique fund and it's reimbursed at the state and federal level. That's correct.
Thank you, Stacy. Comment or question about if we go all virtual, do you like a state mandate what money, you know, or how can we recoup versus people doing nothing and getting paid? And I believe this is a little bit, you know, when we talk about going virtual, you can elaborate on this, but it would be very different than what happened last spring.
That is correct. If we were in a virtual environment, there would be layoffs in any building that was in a virtual environment. So just use as an example, if there, if the high school moved to a virtual environment, there would be layoffs across all levels, so support staff, teaching staff, administrators.
They just wanted to comment and thank Margaret that they appreciate your assertive nature, although, you know, without being aggressive. And then a question for you, Stacy, which is, is the line by line budget available for public viewing and input?
Yes, it's on the website. It's under the Board of Education, like under finances, and the line item budget is available.
Matt, hold on, Peggy has her comment.
Just in terms of the instructional software, for budgetary reasons and in light of EDLO 2D, we have had to evaluate our software. We have, there are still many free softwares that have met EDLO 2D requirements that we are using. But we have reduced the HADE software that we use. We've also gone through both these. And we're looking across grade levels and content levels to really streamline that. So that, that has been a process that we have followed. And there's a question also that I think you'll read in a minute that talks about software expenditures for our virtual program. So the software that we are using in our virtual program is the same software that we can use in our in-person program. So that's a per pupil expense, so it's not an additional virtual student expense. The Zoom platform, that is, that is additional. But we need to have a meeting platform in case we need to go totally virtual again due to COVID-19. So that is, that is an expense and then screencastify so students can record their lessons. But those are expenses that we need to, have needed to make to be, to be prepared for whatever happens in this changing environment.
I just want to, I want to just have to clarify. The line item budget is available on the district website under budget and taxes. And then if you scroll down to the 2021 budget and you click on the line item budget, that's where it's available.
Thank you, Stacy. And it is, you know, there's a lot of information there. And it can be difficult to understand with, based just on the account codes, where exactly the money is. But, you know, if you have questions, community members have questions, you're feel to reach out to district and we'll do our best, you know, given all of our priorities at the moment. We will really try to answer your questions to get back to you. But as you can tell, there is a lot going on at the moment. A comment from Deanna, just, you know, volunteering to meet whenever needed to help with figuring out how we can resolve, you know, where money could come from potentially and how we could resolve this. A question from Christina Berecki, which was, when will the decision be made if we need to go completely virtual? With, you know, and just noting that parents need ample time to plan. And you all can correct me if I'm wrong and it's not the answer Christina would want to hear. But I believe, you know, we'll make it, you know, when, you know, when we need to, hopefully not sooner than then. So that, you know, I don't know how much time will go into effect from the time we make the decision to it actually happening, will we give parents, you know, a two weeks notice, a month's notice? Obviously, you know, longer than that may not be feasible. So I would imagine it would be somewhere in that range, but it'd be great if you have any thoughts on those already. We may not have that information quite yet. Let's see here, we got the question from Tim Shesa, which Peggy already, I believe, answered, but talked about, you know, what are the expenses the district has already devoted to virtual learning, separated between licenses and hardware expenses? And what additional licenses and hardware expenses are expected should we decide, you know, all virtual? There are a lot of things that we've already outlaid cash for, such as the smart schools money, where we've already outlaid the money for those devices and they just haven't come in. So in those cases, that's not new monies we would be spending. We would just be trying to get those, those devices. I know we've been working as well to get, you know, hotspots and other internet solutions. But, you know, there will be additional monies that ideally we could spend, but we're, you know, it's not, it won't be an ideal deal solution if we're forced to go virtual. A comment that, saying that, I can say that being an aide at the high school currently, I am terrified for all of this that is happening. When you say that these cuts that would be made would be layoffs, is there absolutely no option for these positions to be furloughed? I can speak for myself and I'm sure many others, when I say that losing benefits at the drop of a hat is absolutely devastating. I don't know if Stacy, that's something you could talk about or not.
So we would need to, it would be a layoff situation. There's not really much, unfortunately, we're able to do. Cobra is an option for employees to continue benefits. A layoff would be a qualifying event if the individual had a spouse that they could jump onto their insurance. That would be an option if that is a situation for that employee. What does, a layoff is a qualifying event. But unfortunately, if the 20% is a realization, $3.6 million is not something that we'll be able to fill that gap without the realization of actual layoffs. Unfortunately, we're not able to absorb that through contracts or services. I wish I had better news.
Another question, which was, who is making the decision? You know, what positions will be cut to ensure the least impact on students? And are we taking into consideration seniority?
Will meet as a budget committee to discuss, will present in public session. And ultimately, the board would take action to eliminate the positions.
It is a, you know, combined effort with the board and the, you know, admin team and budget committee and district staff to, you know, come to these, obviously us on the board, you know, we don't work in the schools every day, so it's difficult for us to say this position is more impactful than others. So it's a collaborative effort with everyone to try to come up with, you know, the best decisions that we can. And we will do our best to do that. And another comment, just thanking Margaret as well. I believe, unless I've missed any other comments in the spam folder or anything, I believe there's all the comments from the public for tonight's meeting. Is there anything else the board wanted to bring up or discuss?
I would just ask, sorry, that when we post the meetings, we, again, are careful with the language and that we do it timely so we don't start a panic again. Thank you.
Thank you, Media.
Can we just finalize next steps? Like what should we be expecting? Should we be expecting to hear from, I mean, I'm not on the budget committee, but, you know, happy and willing to participate in whatever conversations need to happen. I know that we have a quick turnaround here as we're meeting next Wednesday. So I'm just wondering if there's something that we should be preparing for before then or next steps?
I can't hear anything currently, I don't know if.
I just find this really difficult, I'm sorry. I don't hear anything.
I don't know if there was any discussion going over there. I couldn't, I couldn't hear anything here. That's, that's what I mean, what I was making, it's difficult to tell if people are speaking or not under the masks. But I was just waiting to see if there was an answer to Margaret's question.
So we're looking to reconvene the budget committee on Monday. We'll meet with the associations on Tuesday and then we'll have an update for the board on Wednesday at our next meeting.
Is there any way that, you know, as I've mentioned before, it would be great to have as much information ahead of time as we can? Although in this case, we're not looking to act on any of this information at the meeting next week, so.
That's correct. We would be acting in October.
Okay, in that case, I think that strategy makes sense for the meantime.
If any, sorry. If any BOE members have something specific they want addressed at the budget committee meeting, please send it to Mr. Jackson. Or me, or me.
With that, I'll just ask that, you know, for the budget committee meetings, folks on the budget committee, just share if, you know, you know, what, you know, if there, you can't make it for some reason, then someone else might be willing to step in. So just please, you know, especially in this time, you know, communicate more so maybe than you would otherwise with the rest of the board. And that would be great because I know, as Margaret said, there are folks not on the committee. And now for anyone that's watching, we can't have more than three board members and, you know, without it being a whole public meeting. So we have three people on committees, that's what school districts do. And that's how we work with what we, what we can. But if for some reason someone's not able to make it or is getting, you know, a little overwhelmed with everything going on, then I'm sure someone else would substitute in for your position. Just as a, an FYI. If that's it, I think we are coming to a close on tonight's meeting. Unless someone speaks up and tell me otherwise, we've gone through all the public comments and any board comment, I believe, as well. We have our meeting next week, next Wednesday, September 23rd, which will be at 6 o'clock and live streamed again. And I'll just need a motion to adjourn at 8:13 PM, please.
I'm just gonna read the roll call really quick. Do I have to read myself? Okay, Mrs. Giller, yes. Mr. Pascal?
I know he got disconnected, so he's not here at the moment.
Mr. Jackson? Mrs. Deon? Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly? Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you again, everyone, board members, administrators, staff, everyone that's listening and that listened, those that reached out with their comments, we really appreciate it. You know, this is a very difficult situation to be in, but everyone here is working our best to do, to, you know, make the best out of what we can. So thank you again and have a good rest of your night.